Good evening and welcome to the October 28, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown and I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner of the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum, Cable, and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our viewers and citizens, tonight's livestream audience. I would like to present our Gaston County Commissioner, beginning on my far right.
Alan Fraley, Chairable Township.
Good evening, Scott Sheehan, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Jim Bailey, South Point Township.
Kathy Conner, Dallas Township.
Bob Hobus, Crowthers Mountain Township.
Good evening, Tom Keger, Gastonia Township.
If everyone will please rise for the invocation given by Commissioner Hobus and then the pledge of allegiance be given by Commissioner Sheehan.
If you will all please bow with me. Gracious Father, we come to you to conduct the county's business, being ever mindful of the needs of citizens of Gaston County. Father, it's all of our responsibilities, both those of us elected and those of you here in the audience and at home, to look after those in our neighborhood, to understand those who are in need, to be a shoulder for those who need someone to talk to. We are a community, and with that community comes that neighborhood responsibility. And Father, help us keep all that mindful in our presence and our interactions every day with individuals in our county. And Father, help us to continue to be a warmth and a light of your heart that shines out into our community. We ask that in Christ's name. Amen.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight, Proclamation, Commendations, Award and Certificates. I will now ask Commissioner Bailey, as he makes his way down. We're going to proclaim November 4th through the November the 11th as Operation Green Light for veterans in Gaston County in recognition of Veterans Day on November the 11th, which there'll be a parade in Dallas, North Carolina to honor all veterans and in honor of all who have served in our country in the United States Armed Forces. I will now ask Mr. Bailey. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. First, before we get started, any veterans in the audience, if you could please stand up, please? I appreciate everybody give a hint. Alright, thank you. Alright, whereas the residents of Gaston County hold deep respect and gratitude for all who have served our country, our country, our armed forces, and each November the 11th, we have the solemn privilege of honoring the Veterans Day, who have bravely defended the independence and safeguarding of the freedoms and allows us to live in the land of free and the home of the brave. And whereas the veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legions, Veterans of Foreign Wars, religious groups, civic groups, and functioning in county veteran service offices in 29 states, helping service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian life each year with an estimated 20% increase expected in the near future. And whereas studies indicate 44% to 72% of the service members experience significant stress while transforming from military to civilian life and face the elevated risk for suicide during the first year after the military service. And whereas our nation prepares for the commemorative of its 250th anniversary, the Board of Commissioners believes that it is important to observe Veterans Day and pay tribute to those whose courage and devotion have preserved the liberties upon our country and what they were founded on. And whereas the Board of Commissioners called upon the Gaston County citizens to participate in Operation Green Light for veterans by honoring the services and sacrifices of the men and women in uniform who are transitioning from active duty and by displaying green lights in their windows for the places, businesses, and residents from November the 4th through Veterans Day 2000, excuse me, Veterans Day, November the 11th, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November the 4th through the 11th, 2025, as Operation Green Light for veterans. And thank you very much for your service.
Good evening Chairman Brown, Commissioners. This year, as green light shines across our communities, they remind us of something powerful. That even in darkness, there's always light. Operation Green Light is more than a display of colors. It's a symbol of gratitude, recognition, and hope. For those of us who have worn the uniform, the transition home can sometimes feel like stepping into the unknown. But when we see that green glow in a window, on a porch, in a town hall, it tells us something deeply meaningful. We are seen, we are supported, and we're not alone. That light represents every handshake, every thank you, and every community that stands behind its veterans. It reminds us that service doesn't end when we take the uniform off. It continues in how we lift each other up, how we serve our neighbors, and how we build a future worthy of the sacrifices made. So this year, let the green light shine, not just from our buildings, but from our hearts. Let it guide us toward compassion, connection, and a renewed commitment to those who have given so much. On behalf of all veterans, thank you for keeping the light on.
Joe? Joe?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, we get to do this once a year for this, but I want to say thank you again for your continued efforts. I am so amazed by what you do, and I think something is happening, not just here locally, I think globally right now. We're starting to see our veterans kind of taken care of more. I don't know if it's the podcasts that we see or the things that people are coming back and exposing to things, but I want to say thank you to you and every veteran in the audience, but I want to say thank you for your commitment to those people who come over there every day. And you have done nothing but take this and run the ball, so man, I'm excited and thank you so much. Just wanted to say that to you.
Thank you, and it's been an honor to serve, it really has. Thank you all very much.
The next proclamation, commendation, award certificate, Commissioner Keger will be given a commendation to Commend the Knights of Columbus, St. Gregory Council, number 6700, on its 50th anniversary. Commissioner Keger?
Come on up, folks. It tells me that John Manning, James Roberts, Ellen Roberts, and John Crumpus, everybody's here. Hey Ellen, how are you? We've got you multiple copies of it, so. She just wanted the extra tension, I think.
You know her very, I mean, everyone up there knows her very well, Mr. Keger.
There we go. I'll get to it. It gives me a little extra honor to do this since I've been a member of the Knights of Columbus since I believe 1977. So I was there almost at the beginning. Name Dick Redner ring a bell with anyone? I think he's the guy that brought me in. Whereas the Knights of Columbus, St. Gregory Council, number 6700, received its charter from the Supreme Council on June 1, 1975, and has met at St. Michael's Catholic Church since its inception. Originally at St. Michael's School, and now at the Parish Center. And whereas the Knights of Columbus is a charitable fraternal organization of Catholic men aged 18 and older, whose guiding principles are charity in terms of both dollars and time, unity, fraternity, and patriotism. And whereas the Knights of Columbus is the world's largest lay Catholic family service organization and following in the footsteps of their forebears more than a century ago. Today's knights and their families stand shoulder to shoulder in support of one another. Whereas the council's gross collections through 2024 totaled more than $600,000 for Operation Lamb, which stands for Least Among My Brethren, benefiting organizations such as Holy Angels, Special Olympics, Gaston Skills, Ark of Gaston County, Webb Street School, among others, and among others. And whereas the council has supported numerous organizations and causes, including Catherine's House, local food pantries, the Coats for Kids Program, Global Wheelchair Mission Partners, Scouts, and Victims of Hurricane Helene by providing food, clothing, and other essential needs. And whereas the council's first major undertaking was the restoration of St. Joseph's Catholic Church in Mount Holly, the oldest standing Catholic church in the state, which had been unoccupied for many years. Members refurbished grave sites and other church properties, and upon completion, the Bishop of Charlotte celebrated Mass at the church. Since that time, the Belmont Council from Queen of the Apostles has continued to maintain and preserve the church. And whereas the order funds the necessary satellite uplinks to broadcast papal messages and ceremonies throughout the world, paid for the restoration of St. Peter's Basilica facade and financed the restoration of the Madero atrium leading to the Holy Door, which is opened by the Pope at the beginning of a holy year, the most recent Jubilee of 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners commends and recognizes the Knights of Columbus, St. Gregory Council, number 6700 on the occasion of its 50th anniversary, and this will be adopted later at this meeting during the voting meeting. And I'm gonna, I don't know who's gonna take it and who's gonna talk, but I think you are. Anybody? Have at it.
Thank you very much. Our council, like, we've been here for 50 years. We're very active, not just at St. Michael's, but within the community. We, last year when Helene came through, these men and others really stepped up and took truckloads worth of, full of food and clothing and other items up into the mountains for the folks that needed it. We continue to strive to do everything we can, both for our community and for our families, and we thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Congratulations. Now just go right to the next one.
Do I do it before? Do I do it before Tom? Hope United Survivor Network and Gaston County Family Justice Center, there are family justice centers in 45 states and 25 countries totaling more than 300 family justice centers worldwide. North Carolina has the second most family justice centers in the world. As your Chairman and Board of Commissioners, I am proud to announce that earlier this month, Hope United Survivor Network Gaston County's Family Justice Center earned its affiliation status with the Alliance of Hope and International, making Gaston County Family Justice Center only one of 73 affiliated centers worldwide. This affiliation represents Gaston County's commitment to leveraging resources while strengthening community's response and to violence to hope and create safer communities. Through the strategic use of grant funding, the Department of Advancing Offender Accountability and Improving Evidence Collection by equipping the hospitals with an advanced camera for use in the emergency room, this camera allows medical professionals to document captured physical injuries of trauma survivors in the greatest accuracy and detail. Soon, all law enforcement agencies in Gaston County will be equipped with thermal imaging cameras to detect and document bruises and injuries that may be visible, not to the naked eye. By removing silos, leveraging the funding, sources, and fostering cross-sector collaboration, Hope United is improving outcomes in survivors, families, and the systems that serve them. Like I said, only one of 73 across the world. So congratulations to them, and then we'll turn it over to Tom, but congratulations to Hope Survivor and what you guys are doing in the Family Justice Center.
Well, folks, you want to join me? Good evening. Again, I'll get right to it. Joining me, well, Tara and our DA I'm familiar with. Everybody else, you want to tell us who you are?
Molly Weedland.
Andrea Wyatt.
Kathy Mayberry, Conover Center.
Heather Kaufman with the Lighthouse Children's Advocacy Center.
I'm Emily and became a victim.
Whereas domestic violence impacts women, men, and children of every age, background, and belief, with nearly 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men in the United States having suffered physical violence by an intimate partner. And whereas, Hope United Survivor Network has implemented the Domestic Violence High Risk Futility Prevention Team, a partnership with the Kathy Mayberry Cloninger Center, the Lighthouse Children's Advocacy Center, the Gaston County District Attorney's Office, the County Police Department, the County Sheriff's Office, all law enforcement jurisdictions, probation and parole, pre-trial services, Gaston County EMS, Care Mountain Health, and the Gaston County Department of Social Services, working together to identify and respond to the most dangerous cases of domestic violence. And whereas, by strengthening communication, coordination, and intervention across multiple systems, our community partners have created a more comprehensive network of support that saves lives and fosters long-term safety for survivors and their families. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an important opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and the individuals who provide advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims October of 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens of the county to speak out against domestic violence and support local efforts to assist survivors of these crimes in finding the help and the healing they need. To be adopted later this meeting also, and I'll let you all decide who's gonna come up and say a word or two. There you go.
Thank you so much for that recognition. We are very proud of the work that we're doing at Hope United. It's been a great five years, and we are proud to say that we are now an affiliated center bringing Gaston County the affiliation and one out of 73 worldwide. So I want to thank you all for the support. To date, we have served over 4,000 clients through the Family Justice Center, and we have brought together a coordinated response of over 350 of our high-risk offenders here in Gaston County. So we are incredibly proud of that work, and I thank you again for all of the support. I'd like to give Travis Page the opportunity to say something, as you know, our partnership is very meaningful, and because of our work and his work, we are able to help create a safer community.
Thank you Tara. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, thank you so much for your support of our fight against domestic violence here in Gaston County. My office has made domestic violence a priority, that along with DWIs and prosecuting violent offenders and drug traffickers. But DV is... But DV is something that we see play out, not just in the courthouse, but we see it in our homes, we see the impact of it in our schools, and also on our healthcare system. The long-term effects of domestic violence in our community are generational. Children see it, and they carry on that activity in the future, and they also suffer the health consequences, the PTSD, the heart disease, the blood pressure. All of these issues that we've seen long-term are created by what happens at home. And because of your efforts, because of the collaboration that we have with Chief Zill, the county police, the implementation of a danger assessment for law enforcement, the collaboration with gyms, with court services, all of these agencies that the county supports, we are able to step out of the silos to work together, and we're making a real difference in the homes of Gaston County residents. And so none of that is possible without your support. So thank you very much for that. And thank you for the honor this evening for recognizing and shining a light on our fight here in Gaston County this evening. Andrea Wyatt is our administrator for the shelter, and she's gonna give a few remarks as well.
And I will be brief, not much to add to what's already been shared. But thank you so much to the commission for many, many years of support of the Domestic Violence Shelter and to county leadership for continuing that support. I would be remiss if I didn't take this moment to say a special thank you to Commissioner Kloneger, who dedicated her life's work to serving survivors here in Gaston County, and it is just an honor to stand on the foundation that she built and try to continue her legacy. So thank you. Thank you all.
I wanted to say something to all of you who are part of this and Commissioner Kloneger as well. This is not something that's dealt with lightly. It's not fun. But I want to tell you ladies, you're the face of what happens for somebody who's responsive to that. And I'm very thankful for what you guys do. I'm thankful to you, District Attorney Page, and Tara, your whole staff. Because what's happening is we're changing lives. So is with great recognition, we'll get to tell you, Joe, from 4 to 11, this building will be lit up in green. And then after that, it'll be lit up in purple. As you know, Mr. Kloneger and I are wearing purple tonight to honor that. And that'll happen after those days for that. So don't think that we just forgot about it. We'll make sure we get the veterans, and then we'll get to share the month. But I just wanted to say thank you for what you do from this board. This board means a lot to how you guys are looked upon. And you're the face of the person who doesn't want to show their face, and we're very thankful for that. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation to proclaim the week of October 5 through the 11th, 2025. Mr. Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask Mr. Vincent Wong to join me. And I think it's appropriate, because immediately after this, we have some individual recognitions of service. So any firefighters who are on our list that we're gonna recognize tonight, if you're here, if you'd come on and join us, because this proclamation is just as much referencing you as it is our staff, I'd like for you to come on up and join us. And after we get through with this, if each of you will come and tell me whom you are, because I don't know all of you by face and name. I say the names all the time. But if you'd come up here, and then we'll read the others out loud for the record for anybody else that's here. So appreciate that. Thank you so much. This is referencing Emergency Fire Management and Fire Services Proclamation for the week of October the 5th through the 11th. And it's backdated because we ended up with a situation where we weren't able to have our last meeting. Says, whereas Gaston County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Gaston County and visiting, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many households introduces unique fire risks. And whereas most of the electronics used in homes today, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode.
And whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key signs of action: by only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium-ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, an improper use, such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And whereas, if the proper disposal and recycling of lithium batteries helps to prevent environmental hazards and reduces fire risks in the home and the community. And whereas Gaston County's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety Lithium Batteries in Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims October the 5th through the 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Gaston County. And this will be adopted in our meeting tonight on the 28th.
Mr. Wong?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hovis and Chairman. On behalf of our career and volunteer firefighters, our Fire Marshal's Office, 911 telecommunicators, and emergency management team, I'm honored to accept this proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week. Prevention is the front line of public safety. This week, reminding the families to test smoke alarms monthly, plan and practice two ways out of every room, stay in the kitchen when cooking, and give heaters at least three feet of space. We're also sharing this information about safety, safely charging lithium-ion batteries, one of the fastest-growing fire risks in our homes. I want to thank our schools, community partners, and local media for helping spread these messages, and the board for your continued support of prevention, training, and outreach. Every preventable fire avoided means one less tragedy for a family in our community. We proudly accept this proclamation as a shared commitment to safety and as a reminder that prevention starts with all of us. Thank you.
Two of our individuals are here today that are part of the recognition that we wish to give our folks who have spent a lifetime in fire service. And I would like for those two that are here with me to come forward. Mr. Les Friday? Thank you, sir. Forty years of service to the fire service. And Mr. Hovis, if I can find his. Bear with me. And Jeff Hovis as well. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Another 40 years of service, his is with East Gaston Fire Department. Those two are here present with me. And there are others here as well. Did we have any? Didn't have any gyms, rescue. Now, is she? Elizabeth, I'll come here. Miss Elizabeth. I thought all of y'all knew that was my fault. I didn't give good information. Elizabeth Isling, thank you. 10 years of service with the Rescue Squad. And I think that's all that are present, correct? Okay, I'd like to read the rest of these for the record, so everyone will know whom we're recognizing. Dallas Fire Department, Stephen Lambert, 50 years of service. Corey Jonas with East Gaston Fire Department, 20 years of service. Also with East Gaston, Lamar Lee, 40 years of service. And with the Ranlo Fire Department, Matt Godsel with Gosnell, with 30 years of service. Todd Lewis with 30 years of service. Carl Moore with 30 years of service. Doug Moore with 30 years of service. And Scott Rice isn't gonna mess up the trifecta. That'll be five at 30 years of service. Gaston County is privileged to have these individuals. Their certificates will be passed on to them. But we appreciate all that they do to help make our community safe. And I'd like for everybody to give them a wonderful round of applause.
Each year, the Board of Commissioners honors Gaston County's volunteers through the firefighters and Rescue Squad members, as Bob has just done. They have reached the milestones of 10, 20, 30, and 40 years of service, and dedicated volunteers undergo rigorous hours of training to provide these valuable services to our citizens. We thank you again for your service.
Thank you, Jan. I have two more. We have the privilege of recognizing two of our Gaston County PD officers who have moved into retirement. We'd like to call up first Master Police Officer Douglas Alexander Hoard. If you'd please come up, sir. And any family, anybody wishes to join him? You're welcome to do so. If you'd rather not, that's okay too. I'm not gonna put any pressure on anybody. Come on up here, sir. Right here. Whereas, Master Police Officer Douglas A. Hoard, retired from the Gaston County Police Department effective July 1, 2025, after serving 30 years with Gaston County. And whereas, Master Police Officer Douglas A. Hoard has requested that he be awarded his Service Sidearm Glock Model 45, serial number BRTV 353, and badge worn during his service with Gaston County Police Department. Pursue it with North Carolina General Statute 17F-20, subtitle A, and Board Resolution Number 259 dated October 27, 1983. Therefore, now be it resolved by the Gaston County Board of Commissioners that the badge worn by Master Police Officer Douglas A. Hoard and his Service Sidearm Glock Model 45, serial number BRTV 353, be declared surplus equipment. The badge worn by Master Police Officer Douglas A. Hoard be given to him in remembrance of his service with the Gaston County Police Department. The Service Sidearm Glock Model 45, serial BRVT 353, be permanently retired by the Gaston County Police Department and offered to Master Police Officer Douglas A. Hoard for the purchase of $1. The chief of the Gaston County Police Department is directed to award Master Police Officer Douglas A. Hoard with his Service Sidearm and badge as specified and worn by him during his service to Gaston County in accordance with the North Carolina General Statutes and the policy of the board. Be it further resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners express their sincere gratitude for the dedicated service of Master Police Officer Douglas A. Hoard, and wishes him the best in his retirement. This will be adopted the 28th day of October. Would you like to say something? Please.
Thank you. I appreciate it's been a good career with Gaston County Police. And I've traveled all over the country, either in training or instructed other agencies. And you have a hidden gem here. In my mind, I truly believe that Gaston County Police is one of the most professional agencies you'll find. And there's a lot of good agencies out there in departments, but I appreciate the board's backing of us, so I appreciate it.
Doug, it's a good day for you. It's a bad day for us. But obviously, we get to come back. And I just want to say thank you for your service, especially to this county. Ma'am, thank you. I know that's a hard job when you have to wait to see what comes home. Obviously, they get this.
That's right.
Doug's been a great person for us here at the county, and we're so happy. And we'll let you have him back for a little longer, but we wanted to hang around, so thank you. Congratulations, Doug.
Thank you.
Tom?
I just want to say that, you know, you drove the boat fairly well. You spent a lot of time driving that boat up and down the river. But a lot of people forget how many years you drove us on the Christmas parade route.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I appreciate y'all's commitment to the county police and your support for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next presentation is... Mr. Davies here?
He's here.
Oh, he's hiding behind a post. I couldn't see him. I was looking for him. I couldn't see. Mr. Davies, if you'd come up and any of your family and all that'd like to join us, and I'm sure all of your other folks, whatever, that's fine. Thank you, sir. Whereas, Master Police Officer Scott Davies, retired from the Gaston County Police Department on September 1, 2025, after serving 27 years with Gaston County. And whereas, Master Police Officer Scotty A. Davies has requested that he be awarded the Service Sidearm Glock Model 45, serial number BRTV 373, and badge worn during his service with the Gaston County Police Department. Pursue it with North Carolina General Statute 17F-20, subtitle A, and Board Resolution Number 259 dated October 27, 1983. Now therefore be resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners that the badge worn by Master Police Officer Scotty A. Davies and his Service Sidearm Glock Model 45, serial number BRTV 373, be declared surplus equipment. The badge worn by Master Police Officer Scotty A. Davies be given to him in remembrance of his service with the Gaston County Police Department. The Service Sidearm Glock Model 45, serial number BRTV 373, be permanently retired by the Gaston County Police Department and offered to Master Police Officer Scotty A. Davies as for the purchase price of $1. The chief of the Gaston County Police Department is directed to award Master Police Officer Scotty A. Davies with the Service Sidearm as badge as specified and worn by him during his service to Gaston County in accordance with the general statutes and the policy of the board. Be it further resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners expresses their sincere gratitude for the dedicated service of Master Police Officer Scotty A. Davies, and wishes him the best in his retirement. This to be adopted the 28th day of October. Thank you, sir. And please address it.
Things that ever happened to me. I got to spend a whole career surrounded by the best guys in the world, and I'm grateful. Thank you.
Scotty, don't walk off yet. I want to say thank you for your service. It means a lot to what happens. I'll miss our afternoon talks when we get to that. But tremendous job you've done. We're very thankful to have you here for as long as you were here. We look forward to what's next for you, and I just want to say thank you. Next item on the agenda is Presentation, Proposed Conservation Event Fund Program. Mr. Will Weir, Natural Resources Director, will present for this with the presentation after that to the courthouse parking review. But we'll ask Mr. Will Weir to come up. Mr. Weir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. As you know, Gaston County is experiencing significant growth and development, which brings both opportunities and challenges. One of those challenges is the rapid loss of farmland, land that not only supports our agricultural economy, but also protects our natural resources, rural character, and quality of life. Today, I'll be discussing the Gaston Conservation Easement Program that the Gaston Soil and Water Conservation District operates in conjunction with the Natural Resources Department, and how it could be used to strike a balance between necessary development and protecting the agricultural lands that are so vital to our community's future. I'll walk you through the current situation, the challenges landowners face, and a proposed fund that leverages existing revenue streams to create a sustainable program supporting farmland conservation here in Gaston County. My goal is to provide you with information to consider how we can keep Gaston County growing sustainably and to receive any feedback and suggestions you may have. For some background, a conservation easement is a voluntary legal agreement between a private landowner and a land trust or a government agency. Its primary... Its primary purpose is to permanently protect open space by limiting certain kinds of development while allowing the landowner to continue to own and operate their farm. The landowner retains ownership, but the easement ensures that the land can't be developed in ways that would compromise its conservation values. The Gaston Soil and Water Conservation District currently holds three agricultural conservation easements, which Natural Resources staff helps inspect for compliance. So why is agricultural conservation important? Farms do more than just grow food, they also provide open space and help maintain the rural character that many residents value. They also play a key role in protecting natural resources. Healthy soils, clean water, and wildlife habitat are all supported by well-managed farmland. Economically, agriculture is a major driver. It supports local jobs, contributes to agribusiness, and even brings in tourism dollars through things like farmers markets, U-Pick operations, and events. And finally, perhaps most importantly, once farmland is developed, it's gone. We don't get it back, and that's why conservation efforts are so critical now, to protect the land base we need for food production and rural economies in the future. This slide gives us a look at what we're facing, both statewide and here in Gaston County, with some statistics from a study led by the American Farmland Trust. North Carolina is projected to lose nearly 1.2 million acres of farmland by 2040, about 20% of the state's agricultural land. In Gaston County, the projection is even more striking, we could lose over 11,000 acres, over 30% of our remaining farmland. Now, of course, development is necessary. Gaston County is growing along with the rest of the region, and we need housing, infrastructure, and services to support that growth. But these numbers highlight the importance of the balance needed between development and agricultural conservation. Development is outweighing agriculture at this point. This leads to the difficult position many landowners find themselves in. For many families, especially those who farm for generations, their land is also their retirement plan. It's often their most valuable asset. Many landowners don't want to see their land developed, but when developers come in offering top dollar, it's hard to say no, especially when those offers far exceed what the land can generate through farming. Without other viable financial options, many farmers make the decision to sell, even if they'd prefer to keep the land in agriculture. That's where conservation easement payments come in, they offer a way to compensate landowners at fair market value by purchasing the development rights they give up. This gives landowners a real alternative, one that honors their commitment to the land while providing for their family's financial future. So here's the proposed solution, allocating funds to establish a dedicated reserve supporting the acquisition of conservation easements. This will be a permanent endowment, a long-term investment that enables us to protect farmland strategically over time. The endowment can be held at the Gaston Community Foundation, or it could be a new account held within the county. A fund would allow us to leverage matching dollars from state, federal, and private sources, such as the North Carolina Agricultural Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund and USDA's NRCS Agricultural Conservation Easement Program. We would focus on high-quality farms, especially those with prime farmland soils, and located in priority conservation areas. In short, this is a fiscally responsible, forward-looking way for the county to help preserve working lands while keeping them privately owned and actively farmed. To fund the endowment, we're proposing a responsible and targeted approach using revenue that's already being generated as a result of farmland loss. We're not asking for new taxes or pulling from general funds, instead, we're looking at utilizing a portion of existing revenues tied to land conversion to be reinvested into protecting remaining farmland. Here's the breakdown of the proposed funding sources. First, we're looking at using 10% of the revenue from Natural Resources fees, which will currently generate around $100,000 annually. Second, 20% of the civil penalties levied through our Erosion and Sedimentation Control Regulatory Program totaling about $10,000 per year. And finally, funds collected through the present use-value rollback taxes when farmland is converted to development, approximately $65,000 annually. Altogether, this would provide a strong foundation for a self-sustaining conservation easement fund while aligning the funding sources with the impact of land loss. To close, I want to reiterate, it's not about stopping growth, it's about making sure we can grow in a way that's sustainable. Conservation easements give our farmers real options, they allow families to stay on the land, continue producing food, and plan for the future without being pressured to sell for the development. But as we've seen, working lands in Gaston County are disappearing, and once they're gone, we don't get them back. The Gaston Soil and Water Conservation District and the Natural Resources Department have revamped the Conservation Easement Program recently with processes, procedures, guiding principles, templates, checklets, checklists, interest forms, and a scoring rubric. We've updated the farmland protection plan last year, and now we're looking for funding in order to utilize the matching funds available for farmland protection at the state and federal levels. With some investment, the county can help leverage outside funding, preserve working farms, and protect the soil, water, and rural heritage that helps define Gaston County's identity. This is a way to support smart growth, protect natural resources, and keep agriculture a part of our community's future. Thank you again for your time, Commissioners. This concludes my presentation. Mr. Chair, I'll take any comments or questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the Board at this time? Mr. Sheehan?
Mr. Weir, I think if I heard you correctly, you said there are currently two conservation easements in the county?
Three.
Well, a part of the county are being located.
One is down in South Gastonia off of Union New Hope Road, one is past Cheriville on the county line with Cleveland, and then one's between Cheriville and Dallas.
What's the feedback been from those landowners since they've been in the program?
They've been good, yes. The original landowners who put them in the conservation easements have passed away, they've been inherited by others, and they're actively continuing to work the land.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions this time? Mr. Bailey?
Just to add to what Commissioner Sheehan had asked, and I think you kind of touched on it a little bit, say the primary property owner passes away, how does that affect the easement?
The easement will stay, there's, still can't develop the land, the rules that were originally put in place will remain, it will just be the heir's responsibility at that point.
But, I mean, are heirs required to uphold that easement?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
But have we, and how about contacting farms throughout the county? Is that what you guys do, or do they approach you guys?
In the past, they've approached us because we didn't have a revenue source, so the three conservation easements were donated to us out of their, for free, and they covered the closing costs and everything. But this would be, with funding, we could target some of the prime farms in areas that we'd like to see conserved.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kloniger?
Through those easements, those three easements, how many acres does that save us?
Total, about 210 acres.
Thank you, sir. Next presentation will be Mr. Dan Zee, Public Works Director, along with the famous Wilson Limley, Assistant Director of Auxiliary Services, and they will be coming to a presentation on the Courthouse Parking Review. Mr. Yankee Fan, sorry, y'all got beat. Go ahead, sir. You too, Tom.
I was expecting that. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chairman Kloniger, members of the Commission, and Mr. Rotten. Several months ago, you requested an overview of past and present courthouse parking operations. I'd like to introduce, I'm sorry. Courthouse parking, courthouse parking is overseen by the Public Works Department, and I'd like to introduce Wilson Limley, who is the Assistant Director of Public Works Auxiliary Services, who oversees courthouse parking, and he is going to give you some information.
Good evening, Commissioner. So courthouse parking as it stands, we operate two lots that serve the courthouse. The lot in the slide right here represents the south lot, we also have the north lot, which is approximately 805 spaces down off Walnut Street. The south lot's composed of 233 spaces, we have 171 currently open to the public and 62 reserved. Those reserved spaces account for reserved spaces for police officers, we have juror spaces, when jury is not in session, those are opened up to the public. We also currently have 16 paid permitted spaces, those spaces can be purchased by employees of the courthouse. There are 30 in total, when a space is free and is not occupied, they are open to the public as well. We also have 20 other additional spaces, this includes your magistrates, court reporters, public defenders, et cetera. Courthouse parking history. Paid parking was initiated in 2007 at a rate of $1 an hour, $5 max. Total revenue between 2007 and 2022 was just over $1.8 million. Annual highs, $192,207,000. Resolution 2022-146, limited paid parking, July 1, 2022. Permitted parking spaces were introduced in 2022 as well at $100 a month. Like I said, currently, we have 16 permitted, paid-for permitted spaces. Parking revenues over the past couple years have fluctuated significantly since the end of paid parking. We were averaging $165,000 when we were having paid parking. Once we, paid parking was limited and we went to those permitted spaces, we're only averaging about $14,000. This does include citations, so we do have a parking lot attendant that monitors the parking lot and does write citations. We're not getting a lot from those citations, we're getting just over $1,000 annually from those. Citations cost start at $8 and can go to $13. If they don't pay within 30 days, there is a $5 additional fee that is tied to DMV, so as drivers go and try to renew their tags, we can collect that as well. Parking lot challenges, due to the limited capacity in the south lot, the lot that's closest to the building, it reaches full occupancy quickly in the morning, resulting in other courthouse visitors being redirected to that north lot, the lot down the hill off Walnut. This is leading to complaints from citizens regarding limited access to nearby parking spaces. It's also causing courthouse visitors to use the DSS parking lot across the street, limiting parking for those employees as well as the visitors at DSS. Next, you'll see a graph showing kind of the occupancy and when the peak times are for this, for the orange, which is the south lot, the lot closest to the building, and then the blue line, which is the Walnut. As you can see, as the south lot starts to fill up, that's when we're seeing more and more traffic being directed to that Walnut lot. We did calculate effectively full capacity at 78%, which is that gray line. This is the lot's capacity minus the spaces reserved that we spoke about earlier. In addition to this, when jury selection does come, that increases the number of folks coming into the courthouse by roughly 100 to 150 additional folks coming in that require Couple benchmarks, so Buncombe County, Cabarrus, Mecklenburg, Wake County, all charge to park at their courthouse. Their typical rates range from $1 to $3, $10 to $19 daily max, and they also provide permitted spaces. For example, Wake County, it's $1 per hour, $12 max, and they offer a monthly permit of $85 a month. So we have a couple of options when it comes to paid parking in the south lot. The implementation of a Parking Access Revenue Control System, PRCs, there's several different routes you can take. The first would be a proximity credential ticketed transit, this is where you go to the kiosk, you press the ticket, you pay for it when you return to your vehicle and exit the gate. This would be an initial $123,000 investment to set up that equipment. Option two would be an AVI sticker ticketed option, this is where visitors will once again pull tickets, but you could also add a validation sticker, whether it's a hang tag or goes onto the windshield. That starts at $127,000. Option three is a license plate reader, it's going through, it's scanning the back of the vehicles as they enter the parking lot, decreases congestion as vehicles come in, does allow you to still have reserved spaces as well as permitted spaces, and it would read those license plates. That starts at $127,000. All three systems range from $800 to $1,000 monthly in just basic maintenance to operate those systems. Unfortunately, we have sold the paid parking infrastructure that we had previously, all those, we no longer have those machines. Another option would be to implement a parking deck. So with a parking deck, we have seen that there's roughly a 13% increase expected to foot traffic coming into the courthouse requiring the need to have additional parking spaces. We have a couple of options, a two-bay, three-to-five-level garage ranges from $7.4 to $14.6 million, that adds 118 to 316 spaces. You could go to a three-bay, three-to-five-level, and that would go from $9 million to $21.9 million, and would add 141 to 478 spaces. Recommended framework, so under the recommended framework would be reinstate paid parking, $2 to $12 daily max, encourage employees to utilize the north lot, which is the lower lot off Walnut, modernize enforcement through those three options, create parking enterprise funds for those revenues, and then use those revenues to support financing for a parking deck. Revenue potential, so at roughly 170 public spaces, $2 to $12 max, we assume 70% occupancy for six hours a day, 250 days a year, that can range from $350,000 to $450,000 annual gross revenue. Next steps for considerations, direct staff to draft a resolution, reinstate in paid parking, outlining a fee structure, approve procurement of modern systems, establish parking enterprise fund, take that, collect that information, and return with parking deck's financing options for your consideration. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Any questions from the Board at this time? Mr. Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Limley?
Sir?
If I am correct, initially, upon inception of when we started paid parking, we were using a third-party vendor at that time, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. They were taking a fairly large sum of that gross revenue?
Correct.
What was that percentage?
I do not know that percentage.
Mr. Dan, do you know that percentage?
Not off the top of my head, but we can get that information for you.
Mr. Rotten, do you know that percentage?
Yeah, it was significant, probably at least 50%.
Okay, and that went on until what year did we take it over in-house?
That was, I don't know. Dan, do you know?
We took over parking 2017, around there.
So we only ran it for a very limited number of years under our control? Is that correct? Keeping 100% of the funds? Okay. And then the... And then the permanent spaces that are available for courthouse employees, what's the cost of getting one of those spaces currently?
They're a hundred dollars a month.
Hundred a month. And there's how many total spaces of that?
There's thirty total, sixteen are currently occupied.
Sixteen are occupied. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a few.
Okay.
Hey, there's several different things I look at here, which, I mean, the paid parking is something we've been dealing with for a long time. We did fight about the system of how bad the other system was when the other people were there. So I think Ray was over that at the time, and we discussed that before. It was never a try to win or try to make revenue. It was not a revenue maker. It was the kind of, I think now it's really turned into where the lawyers and the employees are taking up the spaces. And I think that's some of the issues that we're having. And, you know, the citizens have the right to also come. And so I want to see something, I would like to look at this from the board's standpoint going forward as we try to find something for this board to find a different resolution than what we have now. If we were to support a deck, obviously, it provides more spaces for more places, but it can, it kind of gets, it's not aesthetically pleasing, you know, to have it there, I guess is the word I'm trying to say. I don't like the fact that people have to cross Martin Luther King every day as well, so it creates an issue. But the one thing I don't like is the nine million signs we have out there. Y'all well know I'm an aesthetic person. I think about that in everything we do here in this building. And I would like to see some of those signs go away, and that's my recommendation. That's not what we're going to talk about. We obviously have to talk about it as a board, so we'll get with that. So anybody who has a recommendation going forward, over the next thirty days, I would say, send that to Matt or to Brian or Dan or somebody. We'll try to compile those together. We'll get back. This is not something we're looking at roughly to start today, but I do think there's some issues out there that we could solve with some of this. I think we really need to look at some of the other things. I did have a question about the parking. Who is allowing the trucks and what's going on inside of our roped-off areas? Is that coming through you guys? Is it coming through the court system? Maybe Jonathan, or who allows that to come inside that area?
You're talking about the roped-off portion around the roundabout, around the monument? So that is a combination of our parking lot attendant as well as the deputies that secure this facility.
Obviously, I hate to talk about this as the way it came out, but when it came out the other week with the threat that we had, it's kind of a cluster on things that were happening. And I don't think anybody should be to park inside of that, whether it be a food truck, a commissary truck, or anybody inside of those areas. So I'd like to see that change, and I'd like to have the board take that into advisement of what's going on in this situation. Not because, it's more because if we get a lot of people in that area and all things happening, it really gets cumbersome, and then all of a sudden, we have something in there. We had a truck with the food truck on the back of it. It wasn't one they drove in. And maybe we could put them, Dan, on the side, not saying we're trying to take that away, but maybe put them on the side as far back in that corner. I did see we had a lot of, and I'll send you the pictures where the magistrates were parked in the fire lane, which also caused an issue that some of the things that we saw. So we'll be sending some of that, and also we'll send it out to the board. But I'd like to say over the next thirty days, if this board would kind of just get your thoughts together on some of the things you'd like to see, you don't like, whatever it may be. But we do have to take care of the citizens because they are the taxpayers. I know we spent a lot of money on using, we had to pave the parking lot recently, I think we did it twice, if I'm not mistaken, during that time. But, so those are some of the things we had to take in. We also have a hundred and fifty million dollar expansion we're going to have to do to the jail at some point. So there's going to be a lot of different pieces of the puzzle, but we probably need to look at and have some expertise that maybe we can put together from our board. Anybody who wishes to sit on that, maybe kind of a little task force that kind of just moves things along. Obviously, Wilson, you're busy. We can get Vincent or Brian to kind of spearhead some of that to help you because you're down doing so much now. But I think that'd be, any other questions on the board? Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. The commission will take citizens' comments on four public hearings. Comments will be taken on the following issues. Conditional use district REZ dash one five eight continued from July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Zoning map change REZ two two nine. Conditional district REZ two zero three. An amendment to the Carolina Sred Trail Master Plan. Before we begin the hearing, let me outline the procedures for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comments will be recognized by the chair, then requested a step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes tonight. All questions shall be directed to the chair in response. The chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. Do I hear a motion to go into public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Sheehan, seconded by Commissioner Frayley. All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk. We are now in public hearing. The commission will now take citizens' comments to public hearing. Conditional district REZ dash one five eight. The public hearing for one five eight, Paul Shriver and Tom Springs. The applicant, the public hearing was continued from July twenty-sixth. Now Ms. Jamie Kemberglu, Director of Planning and Zoning and Builder Development Service, will provide a brief overview, taken by Mr. Skiba.
Yeah, thank goodness for Ms. Kemberglu. I am not her. I just wanted to give the board an update on this one. We were actually contacted by the developer, Mr. Shriver, and they have decided to withdraw their application for this rezoning. Part of the reason I wanted to give the update is because we've had a lot of input in this one, and I did not want the public to hear that they have withdrawn their application for rezoning and think that they were not going to see any development actually take place on that land. As you know, there is use by right that goes along with every piece of property, and so Mr. Shriver and the owner have decided to go with what they are allowed to do by right on that property because they were unsuccessful in all their attempts to kind of meet what Mount Holly and what we wanted to do with them. So they have decided to go with what is a use by right. They have already sent in plans for five subdivisions that will be looking to take place on that property, which is going to be approximately somewhere in the neighborhood of about two hundred and two homes on the twelve thousand square foot lots that they can do in that area. The, I have a call in right now to Department, to DEQ to find out about their application for the on-site wastewater treatment plant and community well. It is my understanding that they have successfully been granted one similar to this down in Indianland. I know that's not here, but they've already done this process in one place and have been successful. So I'm checking on that to see if that is the case, and they are, to my understanding, moving forward with that. So I just wanted to give that update so the board knew what was going on, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions on the board at this time? Mr. Sheehan.
Mr. Skiba. When did you reach out for that verification about the on-site wastewater treatment?
I sent an email to their division chief yesterday.
And no response today?
Nothing today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hobbs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With these small, independently operated treatment plants, they receive from the state an NPDES permit for discharge into some type of stream, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And the results of that discharge are matters of public record, are they not?
Also correct, yes, sir.
I say that in reference to, I had a complaint from a citizen down in southern Crowder's Mountain Township about a wastewater issue that he has from a small privately operated package unit. And that is a concern all of us who've ever had any association with the municipality have. Your municipalities monitor these regularly by staff people, and it's all done. Private plants, even though they're required to have the same discharge parameters, sometimes it's not necessarily policed. It's all done by the state. Gaston County has no jurisdiction or authority over those facilities. There's no entity in Gaston County that does that. It's all by the state. And the state is challenged in taking care of roads, let alone discharge into public tributaries. I say that because it's just a concern. And it's one of the concerns that many of these residents who've talked about the development, whether it's the improved version or the by-right version, they're concerned about water quality. And we all need to be concerned about water quality in our region. We know the South Fork and the Catawba Basins are challenged at best, so we all need to understand that. I make that statement so the public needs to understand if you are on a tributary that has a small package unit, you are privy to the information of that discharge and how well it does or does not meet the criteria. And also, a notice of violation, an NOV, would be issued if their discharge parameters exceed what the permit requires. I say that trying to be educational and not confrontational or objective because a lot of people don't understand how all that works. But I share that with everybody because that is a concern with any development, not necessarily this one being.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I just want to recap where we are, what's going on, just so we have it for the record, but also so everyone can understand. We were approached by the Springs gentleman to put us an application for rezoning of this land. We sent it back to the town of Mount Holly, along with them, to try to work out a deal so that they can either be zoned, planned, or annexed into the city, which they have been working on for the past, so, ten years, let's just say. That failure between both of them, I'm not going to say what, because it's not a, but it had nothing to do with Gaston County and what was happening because by right, the gentleman can dig anything he wants under his land, but he also has the opportunity to petition the state for the sewer portion of that discharge. That right there will be taken up by the state and not by Gaston County in any way, as Commissioner Hobbs just explained. And also with that, they have pulled out their application for us to even vote on it tonight by saying they're going to use by right at a twelve thousand square foot minimum in what they're doing. And all the standards are given to what the UDO states right now, and it will not be changed by anything that we did or said tonight.
Yep, a couple of things that I would add to that, that previously, this was ETJ land that was released. So at one time, this was under Mount Holly's control. They released it so they could have kept it and done whatever they wanted to with it then. When it got released to us, we put on a zoning that matched the area. So it currently matches the current area that's around it. And you're correct in saying, so going with the use by right, we forfeit anything that we could have done as far as any kind of aesthetics that we would have put on it, any kind of traffic mitigations, any open space additions, any amenity centers, things of that nature. So that all goes away. I have not myself been privy to the layouts of the subdivisions to know what they're going to do or not going to do. I do know that there were some townhomes that were originally part of the plan that I think those have gone away because just the townhome market has dwindled off here lately. And so I do believe that what he has proposed will be all single-family dwellings.
So some of the aspects you see of that as well, there's no change in anything that happens in Gaston County as far as what the UDO would be. Most of the municipalities have adopted that same ordinance as well. One of the things that happens when you use by right, so everybody understands, that is a use that has nothing to do with anything. We could put restrictions on it or do things if we were to have the chance to vote tonight, but we didn't have that because they pulled and did it by right. So any of those options would have went out the window, the same as if Mount Holly would have annexed or did anything. They could have put that in together, so they couldn't work that out together over the last ten years. So David, do I need to do anything as far as that is just out together?
It's just, there's something to do, sir.
Gas Commission will now take comments on public hearing zoning map change REZ two two nine. Clayton Homes of Conover, applicant, Ms. Jamie Leese. Planner one, Building and Development Services, will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Leese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see. Okay. REZ two five dash zero five dash two two dash zero zero two two nine is a general rezoning request for parcel ID three one five three three eight, located at one thirty-five Hillside Drive, Dallas. Due to the subdivision of the original lot, the parcel ID and address have been updated from the original application in your packet. The application, Clayton Homes of Conover, on behalf of the property owners Ricky and Crystal Stroop, is requesting to rezone the one point six-four acre parcel from the R one, single-family limited zoning district with US overlay to the R two, single-family moderate zoning district with US overlay. The subject property is located east of Dallas. This aerial photograph shows the lot is surrounded by a variety of housing types. The zoning map shows the surrounding zoning districts of R one, R two, as well as pockets of commercial in the general vicinity of this subject property. This map shows who was notified about tonight's public hearing. In accordance with general statutes, we received one general inquiry about this request. This is the list of property owners who received mail notices. The slot will be serviced by a private well and septic system and is accessed off Hillside Drive, a platted public right-of-way. This request was heard by the TRC. The GCLMPO provided a letter stating there are no funded transportation improvements in the immediate vicinity, and there are no additional TRC comments at this time. The subject parcel is located in Area Three, Riverfront Gaston of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and the future land use plan designation is rural. This request is consistent with the goals and the future land use designation. This request was heard by the planning board at their October sixth meeting. The board recommended approval with a unanimous ten to zero vote. And with that, I ask that you receive the staff report and presentation. As always, the board has the ability to recommend, to approve, to approve with modification, or to deny the request. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation, and I stand by for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the applicant at this time who wishes to come forward? Seeing now, any comments from the citizen at this time who wish to come forward about this matter? Any questions from the board of commissioners? Seeing there are no comments tonight, I will declare the public hearing closed. Chairman, is to recap, the planning board has unanimously recommended approval, finding it reasonable in the public interest and consistent with the goals of the comp plan. Do I hear a motion to approve, except the planning board's recommendation as approved? Motion made by Commissioner Bailey, seconded by Commissioner Frayley. Any discussion? All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Attorney, if you don't mind giving the consistency statement over to the clerk, please. The county commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing zoning map change REZ two zero three. Dwayne Jordan, applicant, Ms. Jamie Kemberglu, the Director of Planning and Zoning. Building and Development Service will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Kemberglu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ dash two four dash one two dash one six dash zero zero two zero three is a conditional rezoning request for parcel ID one four five five nine nine, located at forty-five forty-five Crowder's Crest Drive in Gastonia. The applicant is Mr. Dwayne Jordan, and he is requesting to rezone his property from the R three zoning district to the CDR three zoning district with US overlay to allow for the manufactured home park use to be established. The subject property is located in the southwest area of the county, just west of three twenty-one. The two thousand and twenty-three aerial photography shows that the parcel was vacant. However, the two thousand and twenty-five orthophoto collection shows two existing structures. The area and street in general has a mix of housing types. There are two existing manufactured home parks in the immediate vicinity of the area. Crowder's Crest Manufactured Home Park, which is to the northeast, has nineteen approved lots. And to the southwest is the Charles Gillespie Manufactured Home Park, which has two approved lots. The subject lot is currently zoned.
The subject lot is currently zoned R3. This property went through the general rezoning process in 2023, and it was originally zoned R1. This slide shows who all was notified with information about tonight's public hearing. A sign was placed on the property, and notices were mailed, all in accordance with local and state statutes. We've had one neighbor who has reached out every now and then requesting updates on the case. The case is currently posted on Engage Gaston, and no questions have been posted as of this afternoon. The public information meetings were held on March 27th and 28th of this year, as the original plan was to present this case in April and in May. However, at these meetings, questions and concerns were raised about the existing septic system, and the applicant was requested to address them before presenting the case to the Planning and Zoning Board. This is the site plan accompanying the request. There are two existing single-wide manufactured homes on the lot. Ultimately, the applicant is seeking to establish the manufactured home park use with no more than two lots. The subject property is located on a well and septic system. A new septic permit has been issued this year, and a copy of it can be found in your agenda packets. The original comments from our environmental health team explain that two homes cannot be connected to one septic system. However, these comments were obtained earlier this year and prior to the applicant working with this department to address those concerns. An updated permit has been issued and is included in your packets. Crowder's Crest is an NC DOT owned and maintained right-of-way. This is a screenshot of the updated site sketch from environmental health. The site will have a shared well located on the northwest portion of the lot. The repair area for the septic system is located on the southern portion of the lot, and the existing system is located toward the front of the lot. The permit states that the homes should be connected to the existing 1,000 gallon septic Just as some general information, the property is not located in a county watershed. Typically, watersheds tend to have some density restrictions, but this is not located in one of our watersheds. The subject property is .69 acres, which meets the minimum lot size requirement for the underlying zoning district. In typical scenarios, lots are not allowed to have more than one primary structure on a single lot unless they are over 10 acres in size. However, we do have exceptions, which are commonly known as accessory dwelling units. Our ordinance, however, calls them private residential quarters. Other options for allowing multiple dwelling units on one lot are the temporary family care home use, and then we also have the small home community's use, which allows for a greater density if water and sewer utilities are available. The GCLMPO did provide a letter and shared that there are no funded transportation plans on the STIP, the MTP, or the CTP. This slide does share an overview of the history of the property. So we did have a general rezoning case in 2023. The request was to go from R1 to R3 to allow for the placement of a single wide manufactured home. In March of 2023, zoning and building permits were pulled for a single home. Inspections have not been completed, and that process has not been completed through. In July of 2024, a code case was opened up, and the violation was for setting up a second manufactured home on the lot without permits. The site was found in violation on October 9th, 2024. It was also found in violation again on October 25th. The power was eventually pulled from the site on November 6th due to noncompliance, and the applicant submitted a conditional rezoning request on December 16th, 2024, which effectively put a stay on the case. As stated earlier, the public information meetings for this case were held earlier this year. We did have one neighbor who attended both meetings, and then the concerns of the neighbor are listed in your agenda packets. In summary, there are questions about the utilities, process questions, and a general concern about the request not being in harmony with the area. TRC review was conducted at the beginning of the year, and the main comments received were about the existing septic system, which has been addressed. The next few slides do review the applicable UDO sections that we took into consideration when reviewing this request. The first section is Chapter 2, which defines the manufactured home park use. You'll sometimes hear staff refer to this as MHPs. In general, the current UDO is very specific in not allowing the creation of new MHPs. It allows the parks that were already in existence to continue and perform necessary maintenance. However, it does not allow them to be expanded in any way. It was challenging to determine which regulations would apply when reviewing this case, as the only regulations we have are for existing manufactured home parks. There are other ways in which additional structures may be permitted on lots. Staff worked with the applicant to review all possible options, and ultimately we landed on a conditional rezoning request, being the most enforceable action for what the applicant is proposing. One of the scenarios we reviewed was Chapter 5 for temporary uses. In reviewing this, it was noted that the temporary manufactured home section may only be permitted for the, or in the event of disasters or during the construction of a site-built home. So we were unable to apply the regulations to the case. There's also a use for temporary healthcare structures that we reviewed. This use is regulated by general statutes, and the proposed building type would not meet the statutes that are set by state. The next section we looked at was Chapter 7, which regulates all the uses in our UDO. This slide shows that manufactured home parks may only be allowed to continue if they existed prior to the adoption of the current UDO, and they are subject to limitations. If new parks were allowed, we would see either the letters X, C, D, or S P located on this table. Because the use is not a permitted use, the only way to establish it on a lot is through the conditional rezoning process. Chapter 8 has supplemental regulations for existing manufactured home parks. Upon review, staff did not find that these regulations were applicable to the site plan as this is for the creation of a new park. These regulations are more applicable when reviewing projects for existing manufactured home parks, as it talks about how units can be replaced and how pre-existing spaces can be used for the placement of small homes, which are another use in the UDO. Another section in Chapter 8 for supplemental regulations is the private residential quarters. We call them PRQs. Most municipalities refer to these as ADUs or accessory dwelling units. When we looked into the possibility of permitting a PRQ on-site, the UDO is specific in saying PRQs cannot be accessory structures to manufactured homes, and the structures by definition are also not able to be manufactured homes, so we weren't able to use this route as well. Chapter 14 is the manufactured home park section. This section also reads as it should only be, as if it should only be applied to existing manufactured home parks. However, since the regulations are more aligned with the overall park use, staff found that it would be the most applicable section for the request. The standards that are shown on this slide are sections of Chapter 14 that would apply to the site. This next slide shows the regulations that wouldn't apply, as they are more in line with larger parks that have many more lots as opposed to only two that are being proposed. Staff is recommending several conditions for the approval to accompany an approval of this case. We are requesting that a condition be added, that a foundation survey would be required prior to issuing permits, or prior to the zoning final for the homes on the site. We are also requesting a landscape buffer, specifically a Type A landscape buffer, along with conditions that state that there should be no onsite dumpster, no administration office, and no more than two homes to be permitted on the lot. We have an additional condition that states if one home is removed for more than 90 days, another home shall not be allowed to replace it. This slide shows the site as is, along with what the site plan could look like with the updated buffer. A new landscape buffer would increase screening for the homes on the right side. This next slide shows what our UDO has as options for Type A buffers. It ranges from a five-foot buffer to a 10-foot buffer. Ultimately, it would be up to the applicant to choose which kind of buffer they would want to install to accompany this condition. So, as an overview, the subject property is located in the scenic southwest Gaston area of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The key issues for this area include the preservation of open space and the preservation of existing conditions while allowing low to moderate growth. The future land use designation is rural community, which envisions a high concentration of residential units on smaller lots. These areas have a neighborhood feel and are likely to only have residential uses on them. The Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this case at their regular meeting earlier this month and did not recommend approval of the case. They found that the request was consistent with the vision of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the surrounding area. However, they felt that the UDO was clear and that it does not allow for the creation of new manufactured home parks. Staff shares the same views and wants to add that we are aware of the disconnect between the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the UDO, and we have shared these findings with our consultants, who are currently in the process of updating these documents for the county. Mr. Chairman, this does conclude my presentation. As with all conditional rezoning requests, we ask that you receive staff's report. The applicant is here to provide additional information and answer any questions you may have for him. And then we ask that you either approve as presented, approve as modified, or deny the request.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the applicant at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dwayne Jordan. Property we purchased at 4545 Crowder Crest Drive. I'd asked the Board to consider approving this conditional zoning. There's approximately 15 mobile homes on that dead-end road. I'm not aware of any connectivity to any other highway, any other development that would cause an increase in traffic on that road, or that would change the scope of things. We initially purchased a property to locate one mobile home, and in the process of locating it there and breaking the foundation up, my mother-in-law, who's almost 80 years old, lived in Mountain Village, whose ever district that's in, I think you're aware of, someone from out of state, I understand, bought that location, doubled the rent, lot rent, wanted a $500 deposit for pets, and wanted to come in and inspect her home, you know, at a moment's notice. And she's worked hard all her life to purchase her home. So here I am with the mother-in-law that needs someone to kind of look after her. Of course, we thought, in our wisdom, that, well, we just moved the trailer over here, and that way she can still have some independence or feeling. She has independence in living in her own home. It is not our intent, nor has it ever been, to have any mobile home park there whatsoever. And if something happens to mom, I'm pretty sure I'll get rid of that thing. Also, at the Planning Commission meeting, we just held a few weeks back, there was no opposition, to my knowledge. And as Commissioner Hovis said in his invocation, that we're all one community, and we need to look after each other. I'd like to be part of that community. We've made a substantial investment in it, and I would beg the Board to approve this conditional zoning for those reasons. I'd like to think I make a pretty good neighbor. I'm a Marine Corps Vietnam veteran and 31 years in law enforcement. And I just wish the Board would approve that for these reasons. And any questions that anyone has?
Thank you for your service, Mr. Jordan. You'll please just have a seat right there just for a second.
Yes, sir.
Any citizens wishing to comment on this matter at this time? If you please come step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kenny Lutz, 4535 Crowder's Crest Drive. I'd just like to make a few common statements about this situation. All the residents around this particular piece of property are zoned R1, R3 in the immediate future of this property. And I can't really imagine or seeing a mini mobile home park every day as I pull out of the driveway. They have, I guess, continued to work on setting up both of these mobile homes throughout this process. This original process has been going on for two and a half years, is when the first mobile home came in. And immediately, within a couple of months, six months, they brought the second mobile home without no permit, no zoning or anything. And I just don't think they really care about the law and the procedures and licensing order. But I do not, I wish the Board would not recommend this. I don't think it has a purpose in our community out there. And I think a lot of things have been said that were going to be done that have not been done. And I do appreciate all your services and your time, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizen wishing to comment at this time? Seeing now, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Hovis.
Ms. Caberlu, I have... I have a couple.
Okay.
Is sitting today, Lot 145599, is noncompliant, correct?
That is correct.
And I think Mr. Lutz made the comment that it's been noncompliant for at least two years.
The case was opened in 2024, so almost...
Almost two years. And this is an attempt to remedy the noncompliance, but at the same time, as the Planning Board undoubtedly felt, was it unanimous voted by the Planning Board?
It was.
It was unanimous voted by the Planning Board. They felt like it wasn't keeping in character. And I did make a comment about taking care of people. You are correct, Mr. Jordan making that statement. But also, we have to follow the law of the land. And having been in nonconformance for this period of time and pretending like our ordinances don't mean anything, to me, is insulting to the intelligence of our staff and to the elected bodies that have to do this. I just want to make sure for the record that we recognize this is a nonconformancy issue, and we're trying to make a square peg fit a round hole, so to speak, by following this direction. But that's why I wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, just kind of echo what Commissioner Hovis was saying. From the planning, like you said, the Planning Board were unanimous to not approve this.
That's correct.
Not even the modified. Okay. Because what it sounds like, and I think I'm saying the same thing Mr. Hovis was saying, they didn't really seek approval until they got caught. I mean, I hate to say that, but that's what it sounds like. And we do have, you know, codes in the county that we have to adhere by. And, you know, on mobile home parks, I wish it would actually be more strict, though. But I was just wanting to clarify a few things, and, you know, I do agree that, you know, we can't, we can't approve things for things, for people that they did what they wanted to do until they got caught, and then they put in for the rezoning. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for the Board? I think one of the things that really gets me out of this is, is the elephant in the room, we've ignored what the codes may be. Being a law enforcement officer, being different things, it should be say, hey, we should privy this. And it's kind of upsetting to me to hear that and trying to figure out solutions. So I would recommend, in the latter half of that, is to find something that would conform, and how to get that back to where the stability could be there, that we maybe could help and how to get that back to where the stability could be there, that we maybe could help mother-in-law. I don't want to see anybody go out of the way, but there are things that they can be done there, obviously, within the rights of what's going on. So that's just my comments. Any comments, rest of the board? Seeing there are no additional comments, I'll declare the public hearing. Just to recap, the planning board unanimously recommended disapproval of this request. While finding the request inconsistent with the comprehensive land use plan, they found an inconsistency with the unified development ordinance, specifically in the permitted use table. Do I hear a motion to accept the planning board's recommendation to disapprove?
No move.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? Mr. Goldberg, if you'll please do your part to remit that to the clerk, please. The county commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve the amendment of the Carolina Thread Trail Master Plan and match to reflect the route recommendation of the Gastonia-Crowder-Mountain paved pathways feasibility study. Ms. Peyton Wiggins, Planner Two, Building Development Services, will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Wiggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to amend the Carolina Thread Trail Master Plan to reflect the route recommendation of the Gastonia-Crowder's Mountain paved pathway feasibility study. So the Carolina Thread Trail applied for a feasibility study grant through the North Carolina DOT to evaluate a potential paved pathway connection between Crowder's Mountain and downtown Gastonia. Once the grant was awarded, the city of Gastonia partnered with the CTT, the GCLNPO, and NCDOT to develop the study. The study reexamined the CTT route between the existing trail segments at Crowder's Mountain State Park and downtown Gastonia, with a focus on incorporating the city's new Linwood Springs Park as a central connection point. After reviewing several route alternatives, the preferred alignment follows Crowder's Creek on the west and connects through Linwood Springs Park to the Blackwood Creek Greenway along the east, continuing north to tie into the West Second Avenue Bike Way and downtown network. As shown here, the yellow line represents the originally adopted pathway, while the proposed route travels south through the Linwood Springs Park before turning west to reconnect with the original corridor. This request was presented to the City of Gastonia City Council on August fifth, where the council adopted a resolution approving the proposed revision. It then went before the Gaston County Planning and Zoning Board on October sixth, where it received a unanimous recommendation for approval with a ten to zero vote. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation, and we have Jane Love here with the Carolina Thread Trail to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any citizens wishing to comment on this matter at this time? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing there are no additional comments, I would declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan? Any discussion? All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? This concludes tonight's public hearings. The next item is the approval of the business agenda. We can make it. Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Keeger. All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? We provided a draft of the minutes for the regular meeting of nine twenty-three twenty-five. Is there any revisions? Do I hear a motion to approve of the minutes as presented? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Keeger. All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk? The next item is citizens' recognition. Our portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer citizens' comments and suggestions. The comment period tonight would be intended for three minutes. No questions shall be answered by staff or provided response. Questions requiring response shall be answered through the county manager's office. Citizens' recognition tonight. As I call your names, if you'll please step to the podium, state your name and address. The first citizen signed up to speak is Don Michael. Motion to approve or accept?
About some of it.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Keeger. All in favor? For unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, or good evening, commissioners and board. Tonight, my presentation is to talk about missed opportunity and a powerful solution for digital equity in Gaston County. Let's start with a simple question. Why are sixteen brand-new computers in the Gaston County Public Library still not available to the public three years after the project began? Here's the timeline. In two thousand twenty-two, desks were installed for sixteen workstation. This is the Gaston County Library. In two thousand twenty-three, computers were added. That's just the drives and the main CPU, but not with monitors. Just three months ago, in probably four months, two thousand twenty-five, monitors were finally installed. Yet these machines remain unused. Meanwhile, the current library computers, twelve aging PCs, still run Windows Seven, an operating system Microsoft stopped supporting in January of two thousand twenty. That's five years of vulnerability, malware, viruses, and data breaches. These systems might be unpatched and unsafe to connect to the Internet. So what's the plan? According to the letter from Chad Eller, Digital Services Coordinator, the library is phasing out the old center and preparing to launch new one with sixteen Windows eleven PCs and wireless printing. That's a step forward, but it's taken three budget cycles to get there. Now let's talk the bigger question. Why aren't we combining the technology infrastructure of Gaston County schools and libraries? Libraries and schools share the same strategic focus, recreation culture, and lifelong learning. They serve the same students, the same families, and the same communities, yet they operate on separate upgrade schedules, separate contracts, and separate cybersecurity standards. Here's the opportunity. When Gaston County School System, when Gaston County upgrades its school system, sorry, Microsoft three sixty-five, it should include all library branches under the same contract. When schools replace the end-of-life cycles devices, libraries should be synchronized to do the same. There is a two-point-one million in capital funding allocation for public school technology upgrades. Let's extend that investment to libraries, where students continue learning after the bell rings. Why does it matter? One, cybersecurity. Windows Seven is a liability, and Windows eleven or higher is a cyber-safe standard. Equity. Libraries are essential learning spaces, especially for students without home Internet. And efficiency. And unified upgrade saves time, money, and lowers risk. Let's stop treating libraries as an afterthought. Let's treat them as partners in education. So the ask is simple. Unify Gaston County's technology infrastructure across schools and libraries. Synchronize upgrades. Protect our systems. Power our students. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next person is Alan Ruthier, followed by Deanna Graham.
Thank you, Chad. I'm Alan Ruthier. I'm here on behalf of Camps Rotoma of Gaston County, located in Kathy Kloniger's district. I do want to take the time to thank the board for the ones that I have reached out to, that, you know, the long conversations we've had, Kathy, Chad. Also want to thank Brian Skeba. Brian Skeba for taking my phone call as well, too, and the many questions that we have. So I don't know, you know, how this usually works, but I do, I would like to get some comments from you guys, so if we have to, you know, email later or have further communication, it's totally fine. I do see that the agenda item has now been deleted off of today's agenda, so I'm not sure kind of where things stand with that. It's going to be for the sale of partial ID one-seven-zero-eight-two-five, which does include Camps Rotoma, the juvenile detention center, and the Mary Nelson Center as well, too. I briefly spoke with Chad on my concerns with that, and how that would leave Camps Rotoma, and what it would look like for us. Briefly spoke to Kathy Kloniger as well, too, expressed my concerns on that as well, too. Camps Rotoma is a special needs summer camp that operates throughout the eight to, I'd say, eight to ten weeks, give or take, throughout the summertime. We provide the best camping experience adapted to each person's abilities. We serve age ranges from sixteen all the way up to, I believe, we have an eighty-year-old lady, eighty-one. And so it is, Camps Rotoma is a staple in our community, I can say that. I've been on the board for, I believe, nine-plus years now. I've been involved with the organization for around fourteen, fifteen years. We are a nonprofit, and so, you know, we are funded by donors within this community. But my biggest ask is, I would like some clarity from the board, and I would also like some clarity from our county manager's office as well. The county, from my understanding, Brian Skeba could correct me, but the county did not even, was not even aware that we had a contract. So that contract control number is going to be two oh one two dash three nine three, for the record. And so per that contract, we do still have seven years left with the county on that contract. So I'm just kind of here today to see if we can get some answers. I was told we would be followed up, you know, from the county office. We haven't heard anything. We're kind of in limbo right now, so just seeing if we can get some, a resolution to kind of see where we're going to be at our next point, and what we need to do as a board for the community.
I usually wouldn't answer here, but we'll be getting in touch with you.
Thank you, sir. That's all I could ask.
Just want to make sure, you're not going to be left in the dark. We're going to, like I said, we're just trying to figure out all the things, still gathering information, still trying to figure out everything that goes on, so it's not anything that's hidden or secret. We're just trying to figure out. Like I said, sometimes things get thrown in there, and we'll figure it out. Appreciate you.
Understood. I appreciate the transparency. Thank you.
Ms. Deanna Graham, and the next will be Mr. Sean Bates.
Good evening, Commissioner and County Commissioners. My name is Deanna Graham, and I'm a resident of Gaston County, currently serving as the Vice President of the NAACP Gastonia Branch fifty-three ninety-four B. Our mission is to advocate for the political, educational, social, and economic equality of all individuals, while working diligently to eradicate racial hatred and discrimination. I'd like to bring to your attention a pressing issue, the daily challenges faced by over six hundred homeless students in Gaston County. It is critical to recognize the strong link between our underperforming schools and the homelessness crisis affecting these students. The consequences of poverty are deep and long-lasting, often leading to unstable housing, food insecurity, and insufficient educational resources. Now I understand that there is no single entity that's solely responsible for homelessness in schools. This is a complex problem caused by systematic factors such as poverty, lack of affordable housing, and discrimination, as well as individual circumstances. There is, however, shared responsibility among city governments, the Gaston County School Board, and the county commissioners. It is vital that these entities stop shifting blame and acknowledge their role in addressing child homelessness in our community and take action. Your decision to eliminate the county's Community Support Service Division in two thousand twenty-four, which is responsible for the homelessness prevention and other essential services, to save money, raises important concerns. While collaborating with community partners is commendable, we must see if cutting costs was the best measure, or was it unintentionally putting our children at greater risk? Imagine a child trying to do homework in dim light, at a park, in a hotel room, or inside a vehicle, facing overwhelming challenges that hinder their academic success. Every child without a safe place to rest is one child too many. The shortcomings on the part of our elected officials, you, have repercussions for all our residents, especially our youth. The community's patience with the situation is wearing thin. At this critical moment, I respectfully urge the following actions. One, immediate collaboration. Facilitate cooperation among local governments, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, community leaders in all municipalities to work directly with Gaston County McKinney Vental Liaisons and Concerned Parents, understanding that it takes a village to raise a child. Investment, two, investment and resources. Allocate more county funds toward job training programs, affordable housing, and mental health services. Our emotional state of our children is terrible. Lastly, transparent communication and accountability. Establish clear communication channels and measurable accountability between county commissioners and the school board. I urge you to recognize that this issue is a fierce urgency of now. And in conclusion, I ask that you uphold the county's vision of excellence and inclusion for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Sean Bates. I'm currently president of Gastonia NAACP Branch fifty-three ninety-four B. Now I do stand before you not only as a community leader, but as someone who believes in the fundamental right of every child in Gaston County to learn, grow, and thrive in an environment that supports their dignity and success. Now our educational system is the engine of our county's future. When it functions with integrity and alignment, our students benefit. Our workforce strengthens, and our community prospers. However, we are witnessing a growing disconnect that threatens these outcomes. The lack of communication and accountability between the Gaston County School Board and the commissioners has created uncertainty, frustration, and consequences that reach far beyond meeting agendas and budgets. These consequences are not theoretical, they are real, and they are harming children. Today in Gaston County, hundreds of students are experiencing homelessness. They are couch surfing, living in motels, or unsure where they will sleep each night. These young people are navigating trauma before they even step into a classroom. When systems of governance fail to communicate and collaborate, these students become invisible. Funding gaps remain unaddressed, safety concerns go unresolved, support systems that could change the trajectory of their lives failed and materialized with urgency. Accountability between leaders is not simply bureaucratic expectation, it is a safeguard for our children. The commission and the school board must align on priorities and solutions. Our families deserve transparency regarding how decisions are made, where resources are allocated, and who is responsible for delivering meaningful outcomes. Without such alignment, responsibilities become diffused, and too often, that means no one is responsible at all. Now, NAACP advocates for equitable access of education because inequity anywhere becomes injustice everywhere. When vulnerable students are left unprotected by gaps in governance, that is more than a policy failure, it is a moral failure. Therefore, I urge the commission to commit to the following. Consistent joint communication with the school board that is structured, public, and rooted in shared goals. Clear, accountable measures that ensure both bodies remain answerable for student welfare, facility improvements, and transparent use of taxpayer funds. Intentional collaboration that centers the lived realities of students, including those facing homelessness and instability. Children should never pay the price for leadership silos. Our community expects better, our students deserve better. Now Commissioners, the question before us is whether we will demonstrate mutual accountability. Worthy of the trust this county has placed in its leaders, let us proceed with clarity, collaboration, and courage. The future of Gaston County's children, especially its most vulnerable, requires nothing less. Thank you.
Mr. Brett Messer, followed by Dwayne Jordan. Mr. Brent Messer, followed by Dwayne Jordan. I think he left, but Brian Wineth, you'll be after that, and then Joshua will be after that.
Chairman Brown, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brent Messer. I'm a native of Gastonia, twenty-five-ten Armstrong Circle. I'm the owner of a small business, Facet Foundry Jewelry Studio. In the mid-1970s, while attending Highland Junior High, much different than the school it is today, I had an inspiring art teacher, Mr. Jim Biggers, who had been inspired by his uncle, John Biggers, who had become a world-renowned artist. Both Jim and his uncle were native sons of Gaston County. My having crossed paths with Mr. Biggers and the inspiration he provided in his art class led me to eventually become a custom design jeweler and start a business here in Gaston County, where for over thirty-three years, have served our community while providing employment and collecting sales tax and other tax revenue to help this, this county and our community. The Gaston County Museum has now been blessed with a donation of artworks done by Mr. John Biggers to be cared for and celebrated with, along with the other, many other collections and works of art that are under the care of the museum at now the building at the old Mary Ellen Nelson Center. And their care is really ultimately under your care, since you control the purse strings. The museum is one that has celebrated and cared for the history of the people of Gaston County, these people here, for almost fifty years, and is led by an inspirational and dedicated staff. However, that staff has been diminished by the recent severe budget cuts that were put upon them. The late Senator Marshall Rousch, a hundred years, years of age, and I watched him walk across his floor, his frail body, but with his strong voice, he spoke about the museum, the museum that his wife Ginny had helped start almost fifty years ago. And he stated that the, the, these Commissioners, you, you could tear down the museum, you could kneecap it, you could torpedo it, you could defund it, make it go away. Or you could make it great, just like Gastonia did with the Shield Museum. I understand the desire to monetize property that's become valuable over the years, but please do it in a way that helps the museum continue its mission to protect and celebrate the history of Gaston County and its people. I argue that the museum's fundy that represents only a fraction of one percent of the county budget is a sound and vital investment in that community, our community, these people here. You have asked the museum board to raise more outside funding for the museum, and that is their goal also, and they are taking steps to do that. However, the reality is that for the museum to operate fully, it also needs an adequate amount of public funding, as well as it should, since it does serve the public. So I implore upon you to make the museum great, and, and I've, I've been up here before, it seems like every year, come up here, and the museum's kind of the, I don't know, the slow-hagen fruit, I don't know. But it, it serves a role. I thank you for your service, and I thank you for hopefully continuing to support the museum and the history of this county.
Dwayne Jordan? I think that was the guy who left. Brian Wineth?
Motion made by Mr. Hovis, seconded by Mr. Skeer, all in favor. Deanna Adams, Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, those in the chamber, and those watching online. My name is Brian Wineth. I reside at one fifty-two Nicole Terrace in Mount Holly in Riverbend Township. I was first appointed to the Gaston County Board of Equalization and Review in January of two thousand nineteen, and I served as a board member through the two thousand nineteen Gaston County reappraisal. On April fourth of two thousand twenty-two, I was appointed to the Office of Chairman by Mr. Brown and the members of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. I chaired thirty-eight sessions, and my board adjudicated one thousand four hundred and sixteen residential, commercial, and industrial appeals of the two thousand twenty-three appraisal that were not handled informally by the Tax Department. My term in my service on the Board of Equalization and Review ends December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. The BER is populated by the best of Gaston County, real estate appraisers and brokers, real estate investors and developers, accountants, investment strategists, retired military, and even retired judicial justices. I can attest that this board is one of the better-educated boards that has served Gaston County in recent years. I will also say happily that the Board of Equalization and Review has served to both educate and instruct taxpayers about tax assessment and tax value, and I hope that this continues under the next chair of the BER and all persons that follow in this service. But my main purpose here tonight, with the time that I have remaining, is regarding the next schedule of values that will be presented to you in two thousand twenty-six for adoption and use during the two thousand twenty-seven reappraisal. I urge you to carefully consider that schedule, the data that's contained in it, and even to ask how the data was obtained. You need to understand, as elected commissioners, that this schedule must reflect data that's been mined from Gaston County. The North Carolina Machinery Act in Article nineteen is very clear regarding the schedule of values, and I would urge you to read carefully North Carolina General Statute one oh five dash three one seven of the two thousand twenty-three edition of the North Carolina Machinery Act. I say all that, but now in closing, I thank this board, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to serve my county in what will be this soon-to-be-ending role. But I encourage others that are here in these chambers and watching online to seek any service opportunity that you can find that does the most good for the good people of Gaston County. Thank you.
Joshua Brown?
Joshua Brown, eleven forty-nine Noel's Drive, Mount Holly, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. I'll make this a quick three minutes. In August, we spoke about leadership and accountability within the fire service and our roles, both as y'all's county officials and us as the fire chiefs and firefighters for the citizens of Gast County. September, we talked about ISO ratings and inspections. I'm going to offer this invitation again, November tenth, East Gaston has our ISO inspection, which will rate our rating and capabilities of a fire department to serve our citizens to keep their homeowner's insurance at the rating that we have. Hopefully be able to lower that, but we're always striving to do better each and every year. These have been decreased in the amount of time of cutting down to five-year re-inspections now, and that is going to be going on for other departments within this county. This, this month, I want to speak to you about manpower and what it is and what it gets done. April, October thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one, manpower wasn't really an issue. At four fifty-nine a.m., a residence on the outskirts of Stanley and Alexis called nine one one stating her house is on fire. Her and her daughter were trapped, both of them succumbed to their injuries. The first arriving truck showed up with one person. It was nine minutes before the next fire truck showed up with one person. I myself showed up seventeen minutes later in my personal vehicle, because that's how far it took me to travel to get there, to assist them with getting them out. Manpower is important. October fourth, two thousand twenty-two, Commissioner Brown, right in front of your entrance of your neighborhood, you witnessed or come up on a head-on collision with two subjects that were trapped severely, both drivers of the vehicle, with a total of three patients. It took four fire departments to get there, to have enough manpower to cut both of those people out, and to aid them the care that they needed. Manpower is important. Just the, just the other day, October sixteenth, we had a structural fire on the backside of Spencer Mountains Fire District. The closest department arrived within nine minutes. The next two arriving units arrived at the eleven-minute mark and the fourteen-minute mark. With the two staff personnel that they are allocated, that you have given us for that support of that, what is the manpower for this? We've got to start looking at increasing our manpower to be on these trucks. Why? We're building houses, roads are getting more congested. I am driving my own personal vehicle. I can't drive the time it takes me to go to the station to get a truck to turn around when I can go elsewhere. We need to have these people, these firemen, on the fire trucks going and with doing that. We're the only ones that, when someone's house is on fire, that is able to take care of the people, able to go inside and fight the fire and do that, and we rely on that. We do rely heavily on our volunteers, and we're fortunate in this county to have a good presence of that and going, but you could guarantee that you go and talk to any firefighter on the department, and you ask them, how is it traveling trying to drive to a structural fire and, and get there? County police are doing their job. They see a person driving around the W L line to pass someone to beat the time they're going to get pulled over. Hey, what are you doing? Trying to get to a structural fire. Well, you don't need to do that, and that's wasted time and a person that we need to have their rear end in that seat of the fire truck. So when you call nine one one, and that truck rolls out the door, you've got three or four personnel on that truck. I know it's not anything that we're going to get to next year, but it's something that we definitely need to start discussing and looking at that, to be able to provide for our citizens of Gast County, to protect them, but also the firefighters in case that they have a bad, the worst day of a May Day and puts their line, their life on the line. Thank you.
Josh Forley. November fourth, is that the day you asked?
November tenth.
Tenth.
Yes, sir. Sorry, the eight o'clock. Yes, yep. Typically, an all-day thing till three, four o'clock. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? As a motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan, any discussion? All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next item is the non-consent agenda for the communications resolution closing the government access channel to be effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, at eleven fifty-nine p.m. We'll call it on the county manager. Mr. Rhodes will provide some brief comments.
I'm going to turn it over to Adam.
Thank you, sir. I have a presentation, but I know that the meeting's been gone, long already, so I don't have to go into all of that. But just to sum up, we've done two community surveys over the past two years to take a look at usage of the cable access channel, found that it was the primary use of less than one percent of our residents based on those two surveys. We have other ways of being able to communicate with the community that are more cost-effective and just more effective in general. Rather than spend money on continuing to keep the channel running, our request is that we shutter the access channel as of the end of this calendar year, and that we will continue to produce the meetings like we have here tonight. Those will go out, as they already do now, on our YouTube page, and then also through the county website, through the third-party Granicus provider that we have. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
I want to get a motion before I do that, Bob, if you don't mind. Motion to dissolve the channel on December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, eleven fifty-nine. It's a motion made by Commissioner Sheehan, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? Commissioner Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Adam, what's the current annual budget for the station to operate? The cost is borne by the county, because I think we share that with Gaston, correct?
So we have an agreement with the City of Gastonia, and they pay us every time that they're utilizing this room. And this is something that is being looked at currently, but those costs are essentially paying for personnel, so they're not really offsetting any of the costs for the equipment. The city did pay for equipment at the very start, back in nineteen ninety-nine, when we started the channel, but basically where we are now is between deputies on the sheriff's office side, and then our staff that helps produce the meetings each night. We're only recovering the costs of, of staff. We're not recovering any of the costs of personnel. So the first part of your question, we pay about four thousand dollars a year in subscription services to help maintain the channel, and then we have a piece of equipment that allows us to send the, basically the feed here from the courthouse to both Spectrum and AT&amp;T. That piece of equipment is going to cost us about forty thousand dollars to replace, and so this is why this is before you now. Rather than look at replacing that equipment, we wanted to do kind of a holistic look at whether it was necessary to continue the channel and whether it was a good use of taxpayer dollars.
So the annual budget is?
We're only spending about four thousand dollars a year, but then there, to replace that piece of equipment, which we need to realistically do probably about every five years, it's another forty thousand dollars that we would have to come back to the board and ask for.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Skeer?
Adam, I'm, in my mind, we're, we're hearing that about one percent of the population view it, but I'm, I'm thinking about the population that are involved in the county. That would raise that one percent considerably higher, I think. You know, this is something I don't want to see happen, and I'm not going to vote to do it, but, you know, there's an awful lot of folks that don't use technology that can turn their TV on, a lot of seniors that have gotten very used to being able to turn on and watch the county and the city meetings, and I think it's a much higher percentage of seniors especially, and again, they're, they're technically challenged, and they, they don't use computers or iPads or laptops, they use their clicker. So I just wanted to say that upfront, that I'll be not voting to disband it.
If I can make a point on?
One second. Commissioner Hovis?
Well, in conjunction with Mr. Keger's comments, I know the school system, the school channel, has done a lot of updating with how they operate their channel. They put a lot of breaking news, they run a little banner across it if there's something going on. I don't know that we do that with ours. When the situations were happening with the courthouse, situations were happening with the administration building, about the evacuation and all that, had we used that as a tool to let the public know what was going on, I think that would have been a better use, a missed opportunity of use of the channel to let people know, although at the same time, you're letting the people that are trying to create chaos and havoc, you're giving them their fifteen minutes of fame on the channel. But for the public to know, to stay away from those areas at that time, would be very helpful for the people who are here trying to deal with the situation and not deal with the other public confusion. But what I'm saying is, I've watched the schools' educational channel improve their product in terms of how they market their stuff, and I haven't seen us do that. I'm not being critical, I'm just giving an evaluation, and I've had other people who have contacted me since this has become on our agenda, wanting to know, you know, what's the deal? And I, my comment was, it was a cost. Didn't realize the subscription was only four thousand a year for Time Warner and AT&amp;T, and the forty thousand dollar material costs, if it was shared with Gastonia, because they're getting as much benefit as we are, then that, that would make that less on our part. I just, I just want us to explore all the things, because once you get rid of it, it's hard to go back, and that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
I'll offer this up, I don't want to, but I, I'll offer the table just till the next meeting, just to see if we can get some more information. Seems like everybody's kind of up in the air, but if not, we can vote, there's something to decide on how that works.
Do you have a motion to second?
I'll table it.
We have a motion, but we can table it any time, so if anybody wants to make a motion. Like I said, I'm just trying to offer some suggestions, because I think everybody's still kind of up in the air, but.
Well, we, we as a board have not discussed it at all. Maybe other individuals have had conversations, but I haven't been involved in any conversation.
Well, let's see. Have a motion to table?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Frady, seconded by Commissioner Kloneger. All in favor? All opposed? It's five one, six one, ma'am. We'll table that till December, the meeting in December. We're just, sorry? Six one, and Mr. Bailey was the one who, so right now, we'll go till just the December, what meeting is that? what meeting is that? Fifteenth?
The ninth.
Nine, December?
The ninth.
It's a special day. Anyway, um, next item on the agenda is Commissioner Fraley, introduction to ordinance maintaining criminal law enforcement, uh, criminal enforcement of certain existing county ordinances. Uh, Mr. Goldberg.
Yes, sir. This is to comply with the twenty-twenty-one general statute. It was part of the D, SB, uh, three hundred, that was a decriminalization both the time, which concerns about how local governments enforce local ordinances. Um, there are a couple of things we had to do to become compliant with it, um, to maintain our current ordinances of the book. Um, in particular, we have to, every time there's a criminal penalty, we have to specify that it is a misdemeanor, where before that was just the default assumption. So this is a, just a technical correction, is not intended to, uh, change it. The law also requires now that changes to ordinances have to be introduced at one meeting and then voted on another meeting. So this was originally supposed to be on two weeks ago meeting, but now we'll have, we'll introduce it right now, no vote is necessary, and then if it is the pleasure of the board to vote on it at the next meeting. Um, available for any questions, comments, or concerns?
No vote will be taken on the introduction only tonight, so we'll have to have a second reading on that December special night reading.
That'll be the November.
November, whatever day is that again?
November seventeenth.
November seventeenth, that's the same time that I want the meeting for the cable access channel, not the ninth.
Do you have any direction, or are you...
It's the first reading.
There, there's nothing necessary, you can vote on it at any time if you want, or amend it whenever you want.
No items are pulled from the consent agenda, items, uh, appointments, Commissioner Fraley.
I'm not, please, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sheehan.
I have two, Mr. Chairman. I've got a, let's see, a vacancy council on aging, uh, with a David Abernathy, and I've also got workforce development board, Greg Smith. Application was received.
Seconded by Commissioner Fray.
You can...
All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Bailey.
Uh, yes, sir, I have one. Uh, it is animal care enforcement advisory board, is vacant at this time, and I had an application from, uh, Destiny Elm.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Cloniger.
I have none.
Commissioner Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one, uh, application for the, uh, Gaston Community Action Board, for their trustees, Kimberly Ross. Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keger. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Keger.
Uh, I'd like the board's indulgence to maybe waive, eh, eh, I guess it's been a policy for years that a member of our staff does not serve on one of our appointed bodies, and, as you know, when we see our appointment sheets, the nursing home advisory, uh, committee is always very short, and there's always many people needed. Uh, Mr. Lanfair had mentioned to me that he would be willing to serve on that, and given the fact that that's probably one of the biggest entities involved with nursing homes, our, our gyms, our ambulances, I'd ask the indulgence of the board to maybe waive it for this one time and appoint Mr. Lanfair to that, uh, committee.
I'll second that. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk.
And I will appoint Mr. Lanfair then.
Congratulations, Under Armour.
But we had a vote on that. We just voted on waiving.
Now you go ahead and make him of the appointment.
You're gonna second.
Second.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor to appoint Mark to the nursing home where he should be committee? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Two, three, ten.
I have a couple of different ways you gotta do here, so Madam Clerk, please listen up here. Uh, equalization review board, Mr. Jamie Renee Roman be shifting from alternate position to the at-large position, and then the reappointment is requested for, uh, quality natural resources for Mr. Doctor Stephen Tracy.
Seconded.
Uh, seconded by Commissioner Keger. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Now, the equalization review board recommending Mr. Jamie Renee Roman as service to chairman, uh, appointed by the chair appointment.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next one, uh, health and human services application. Uh, application received from Ms. Berry and the travel and tourism, we'll do, let's do Ms. Berry first. Um, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, that's my regular appointment, sorry, Tom. Travel and tourism advisory board, the non-voting designee ex officio Brian Skeba, Assistant County Manager.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? All opposed? It is six-one, Madam Clerk. Just in case you get a little... Reports, Commissioner Fraley.
Uh, no report, but I would just like to say that today is, uh, National First Responders' Day, and I would like to give my sincere appreciation and thank you to all of our first responders. Thank you for what you do.
Mr. Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, I have continued with some visits of our county departments. Want to give a brief update of what I have hit since we last reconvened. Have been to communications, Gaston County Museum, HR, public health, veteran services, housing rehabilitation, office of emergency management, fire, grants, IT, social services, county police, public library, natural resources, and the sheriff's office. I want to thank all the departments and the heads of those departments for welcoming me and providing me a behind-the-scenes, in-depth look as to what goes on, and for the few departments I haven't seen yet, I will see you soon, so I'm excited about that. Also, on Saturday, I did attend the sixtieth anniversary of the Spencer Mountain Road Fire Department, uh, and Commissioner Coniger showed up, uh, for an appearance there at the well. So if you haven't seen that facility, it is top-notch, would encourage you to go by. Those men and women are doing a great job over there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bailey.
Uh, no, nothing at this time.
Mr. Cloniger.
Um, I attended the Gaston County Hearts and Recreation Advisory Board, and, um, they reported that over twenty thousand, uh, individuals attended Cotton Gin Days. I also attended the, um, ceremony of, of the Dallas new, uh, fire engine addition, plus the water push ceremony. I went to, uh, the Dream Center Academy. Um, I also attended North Carolina Works Career Center grand reopening at Lorre Mills, um, and I spent about three hours at the Spencer Mountain Volunteer Fire Department with their sixth, sixtieth anniversary, enjoyed really learning about their operations along, uh, I saw, um, Commissioner Sheehan there as well. Thank you.
Mr. Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, two weeks ago, the Centralina Council of Governments had their annual meeting in recognition of, uh, their award-winning, uh, efforts and employees here in Gaston County at the Gastonia Convention Center. Uh, as your representative to Centralina, I was happy to be in attendance. It was one of the most, uh, more engaging, uh, meetings. Uh, in order to gain entrance, you had to go through a series of activities, uh, to qualify yourself, to get a number of stickers, so you were eligible for a door prize, and I'm glad I arrived thirty minutes ahead of time, because it took all of that time to complete those required sticker applicants, but I still didn't win anything. But, uh, you know, our work with Centralina is invaluable. They provide, uh, great service to our region. Uh, it's actually thirteen counties, I believe now, that Centralina, uh, references, uh, our, our cog does, and, uh, it helps us to create, uh, long-term directives. It formulated a lot of the direction to create the, um, entity that would govern, if, if passed by the Mecklenburg County's new transit tax, that will be an authority, not run by the city anymore, it'll be an authority with stakeholders instead of, uh, what has taken place in Charlotte with cats and all of that, so that will be transformative. I, my personal opinion is it will not muster the, the voters' support at the present time because of all the things negative that have happened across the water. Uh, if it does, though, then the, the entity that will be guiding it will be much better. Centralina was an integral part of what took place to create that, uh, the new authority that will run it, it'll be much more like what you see with the Charlotte, uh, airport, uh, authority, so just have my report.
Mr. Keger.
No, we're fine.
Thank you, sir. Wanted to let everybody know that the Cotton Gin and Days was another successful weekend, uh, out at the, uh, Dallas Park. Also, with the government shutdown, uh, the county is not shut down, and we're still doing things at Health and Human Services under the tutelage of Mr. Steve Eaton, so thank you, Steve. Hope you can work this weekend a little overtime, we'll get that done for you.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may add one thing. This was the second year that Gaston County passed a budget. First, in the state of North Carolina, I could only wish that our state federal government could do the same.
County Manager Rhodes.
Speaking of budget, um, we are actively engaged in twenty-twenty-seven budget planning. Um, later this week, we'll receive capital improvement requests from all of our departments, so we'll be actively planning our CIP for next year, and we are well along our way on our future work plan from the twenty-six budget, and should have some meaningful updates to share with you for the progress of that work soon. And finally, I just want to give a shout-out to Donnie Hicks. Um, he was awarded a lifetime achievement award from the North Carolina Economic Development Association.
Did I present that as...
Esquire Goldberg.
Annual conference, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we do have need for a very brief closed session, um, and I recommend we, eh, we go to a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight dot eleven, A three and A one, to preserve attorney-client privilege and discuss pending litigation.
Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor? We are now in closed session. We are now in closed session. All in favor? We are now back in regular session. Wanted to point out, there were no actions taken in the closed session. Other matters? Anybody have any other matters? Other matters? I wanted to point out, the commission voted tonight to reschedule the November 17th work session, combined work session, to move it to Monday, Monday, November 17th at 6:00 P.M. here in the Harleby Gaston, reason being because Tuesday was taken. This concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next meeting is a combined work session, a regular meeting, Monday, November 17th at 6:00 P.M. here in the Harleby Gaston Public Court Room. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions or comments, please refer those to Donna S. Buff, 704-866-3196. Good night, Diagra.